I'd like to call to order Monday, October 21st, 2024, City Council Work Session at 6:00 PM. Today, we are looking at, we're reviewing our city committees. As you've seen in our last couple of meetings, we've been talking about this and we felt that it was a good time with the new city manager as well and with new counselors over the last year or so to kind of visit our committees. And so tonight, City Manager Ben, we've kind of tasked him with leading us on this exercise. So further ado, if you're ready.
I know, I'm mayor. Typically, I'd like, it would be fun to have a board with sticky note stuff. I was gone at the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week, so I kind of put this together last second. Well, last week, but I didn't have much time to get more on there. But still, it's a really good discussion to have. And after talking with several of the council and the mayor, just trying to figure out what would be best for this work session, I was determined that at this point, wouldn't be as much going into this, the procedures, trying to vet out. You know, we had talked last time, like, oh, what's the issue? What, what process or policies should we fix to make the meetings run better? That, that is one question that we definitely want to answer in the future. But it was felt that maybe starting off on the higher level, visioning of, you know, just kind of taking a step back and saying, why do we have committees? What are they for? What value do we have? And really, the whole point is, what does this council do as the value or the importance of committees? What committee should we have? Do we have the right ones? Do we have more? Should we have less, whatever? But really, it's just setting up that vision of how you want to work with committees. Because really, these council committees are, are set up for your benefit. And it's to help you accomplish, and the staff to help with the goals and objectives that you have set, as we see up on the wall, the six different goals. So not, not saying anything about our current committees. This is just that first discussion of just understanding what committees are and getting feedback from the council to kind of more set that vision going forward. So then we can go into what types of committees and what policies and processes we want to follow to tighten up maybe the difficulty that we've had or not had, success that we've had, kind of discuss those. And some of that will be discussed today because that helps set that vision. But any questions first, just about kind of the premise of the meeting and we're looking at today? And any additions that you'd want to add to the meeting? Or if that, feel that's covered probably sufficient for the day.
My question is, we have, you know, roughly an hour. What do you want to get out of this? What do you want at the end of the meeting for us to provide? So as we go, I can make sure we get that answered. I look in at your kind of recommendation questions. Are those throughout this, are those kind of the questions you would like to see answered?
Right, I, I think in general, we can answer those to really get that general idea of why we have the committees and what we want to do as we go forward to this next year, how we want to operate with them. I also did provide a model manual from the City of Florence to kind of help with some of that information. But this would also help when we get into more of the specifics of operations because they have a lot of good stuff in there as well. Nothing in here has to be done, but it does provide a lot of good context. And this was recommended from the League of Oregon Cities as, they had several cities in there, but one that had a really good manual of how they work with the committees and been successful with them. So as I read through it and compared it to our bylaws, I was like, yeah, there's a lot of good stuff that we could maybe add or tweak in our bylaws for our current committees to improve on. Talk about operations in general. But then, once again, I took a step back and said, well, let's talk about the first part, which this, this manual does as well. So yeah, some of the questions that we want to go over and I'll just read, and we have them there in the staff. But really, just getting that vision of why do we have committees? What do you want to see them? Do you have the right committees? What's their purpose? What does success look like with having those committees? Going over successes, how do we replicate that? What obstacles have prevented successes? And how do we avoid those? Because part of that does come up with what type of committees or who's on them or what we've been doing with them. The risk of ineffective committee. Just having an ineffective committee or committee that's not needed. Where do you want to go? What type of committees? You know, we've talked about the typical, what we have, the Planning Commission, Budget Committee, those are by law. We also have the EDC, the Economic Development Commission, as well as the ARCs Committee. Those two have been more set up. Debated if they're originally ad hoc or a permanent committee, but they're set up as a permanent committee. So going over those different types of committees, are we, how, what type of people should be on those committees? Qualifications, et cetera. So just getting a better idea of just the form or the base of those, then we can go into more of the meat later. And the reason I wanted to kind of take a little more time on this is I know that the council has had several different meetings in the past, trying to address operations, pitfalls, you know, issues of miscommunication or whatever it may be. And when I was reviewing that, I just felt, you know, we need to take a step back and understand why we have these in the first place. Because some of those things can come from just not having direction, but it can come from operational issues. There are a lot of different reasons that can cause those. And so I just want to make sure that we're right based before we address maybe the other part of the problem. So, so just what I want to do, I guess, first off, is just kind of scroll through a couple of things in the City of Florence manual just to highlight, and we can maybe spur some conversation off of that. The very first page just talks about the, the boards and commissions advise the council on a wide variety of subjects and provide much-needed volunteer time to keep many of our programs functioning at a level that would be impossible without their services. A great broad statement. It's a great thing of having that conversation of why do we have committees? Why do you want to have committees as a council?
One, I think Florence is a similar sized city with a similar type of government. So, you know, they do have a few less counselors, but they're, they're similar. Yes, they're on a coast and have a lot of different types of stuff. But talking to the city manager and the mayor over the last week, they're, they're similar to us in size and kind of scope. So I'm looking at it as it's an opportunity to have some people do some legwork that we can't, our staff can't. There are people that are usually entrenched in the community, whether, you know, they're out there talking to the citizens and enjoying. Let's say if it's the parks. So they have a vested interest in whatever committee they're on. And they allow, they'll help do some of the legwork, help raise some of the questions that we're not seeing. It's kind of why, the purpose that I see why we would want a committee that's a permanent committee. It, it gives more voices, lets us hear more, be more transparent and hear more from the community. Why I thought, liked seeing these committees. Now, where it kind of started too, I think Parks and Rec was really, was really got involved in our Parks Master Plan. That's where they really were doing a lot of good work. And then soon after that, we looked at priorities. Well, that's ended. So now the question is, now what? You know, where do we go from here? And we've gone through some new counselors with the new city manager. I think it is good to kind of level set and look at this again and see where we think they best can.
Right, and that's, it goes into chapter two, what types of agencies, advisory committees, volunteer groups, talking about, we have commissions like the Planning Commission, other Budget Committee. But then there are ad hoc or regular committees that are not required by law. It just mentions in there the general appointed dual role of advising, as you'd mentioned, to make recommendations to city council regarding topics as specified in the committees, enabling provisions and providing volunteer work towards the city council goals and work to plan to achieve objectives as specified by the committee. So yeah, a big part is, and as we had mentioned that, is getting that extra legwork in the community to get additional questions, but really is to get the extra, dive in deeper for time you don't have as a council. I mean, they're doing your work to provide advice back to you. Ideally, working with staff, because sometimes with committees, if they're separate, we're giving these recommendations, staff's over here and it become, you know, maybe not as informed or how do we designate staff times and matching up with our visions? It becomes competing and not really directed. So yeah, so yeah, good.
That we were, we just, we have discussed that we don't want the committees to direct the staff, direct actions to staff. It would, it would have to be the council, council discusses with committees and then the council directs action to staff. You.
Right, I did watch, I watched your meeting in April that you guys had, I believe it was April, that they kind of mentioned that it was a little bit, you know, do you, does the council and the staff work through the liaison? It, it got complicated from what I was listening to, because really, they should be working together. The staff should be providing technical support and advice and being able to bring stuff together, not. But you're right, the committee should not be directing them. And we can get more into that with operations, but you're right. The idea is not to put a bunch of extra work on staff, because if we're not running the committees correctly, that's what can happen is all of a sudden, we have these goals, mid-year, we come with new ideas and like, all of a sudden, the staff is going here and there. And, and are we accomplishing any goal really? Are we really trying to make the best thing? Or are we just trying to chase after years of different ideas? So that can be a risk that we run into with committees if we're not working in a organized manner and with the right purpose.
My understanding in their last conversations about this is that we, as a council, can, I think it has to also with our, with the goals that we are going to develop and part of the goals, those actions or the goals for the committees will come out and then they work on those, their goals. Then, for example, EDC will work with me, I'm the liaison with EDC, I'm in collaborating during their meetings and then whatever address, bring back to council and if they need something from council to re-upon or accept or actions. But that's how I see it right now. But you know, for example, I, I went to the conference and I also have some notes that, that one of the sessions leave its North Marion is doing to, to do promote economic development. And so I have, you know, I want to, I wanted to bring this to the EDC committee. So in this session, are we coming up with what to like them to do or the beginning talks? Or do we still need to go back to the committees and get their input of what they would like to do?
Right, right, we're not, we're not discussing direction to the committees right now. That will be done part of visioning or goal planning. And as they give some recommendations, we want to definitely invite, invite the committees to give some feedback, even on the structure. This is more just a good conversation. We talked a lot about it this last time, this last meeting of just, there's, it just seems like there's been a lot of, yeah, there's been this issue, there's been that issue, and this isn't happening, or this isn't happening, or this did happen, there are successes. But are we really getting out of the committees what we want? And I don't know.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you. So I, after observing how the committee I'm a liaison with and then just also reading through the City of Florence and, and thinking through the questions, I think kind of how we got here is a little bit of, we have goals and those goals talk about a lot of things. And then we have objectives that are like projects. And a lot of those projects are 90%, 95% staff. So when I'm thinking of like a committee and like wanting to harness the energy and talents of our community, I think it really starts with us getting clear on what is, what are our goals? And I think we have an opportunity coming up to like really refresh these goals and get a little bit more crisp and clear. And then make them a part of that process. I think from the previous goal setting, we weren't, put it in the, they weren't invited. It was, I think we have an opportunity to, to do better. So I think our structure, I think it starts with us first, getting more crisp and clear. And then working through like what the operational structure needs to look like, that there's responsibility on both sides within the committee and, and with us. And empowering them, but being very crisp and clear in terms of what their roles and responsibilities are, what we're expecting from them. I think things got a little bit lost for us after the Parks and Rec created, like finalized the master plan. It's kind of wavered back and forth in terms of trying to get with priorities.
So was that, was that mostly from lack of direction? Or just because they really had accomplished the reason they were created?
Accomplished what they sought out to do, but it was the next step that it just wasn't as cohesive. Wasn't a strong rally around it. And I don't know if that was just fatigue because they spent so much time on the master plan. I think communication on both sides to be clear and, and have to hold all of us accountable, roles in that.
So, so back, back to the, the original question. Yeah, so great of how we got here, and there's a little bit of history in the staff report. You know, we had, and the mayor had mentioned, we had the committees set up. The parks was originally for the Parks Master Plan, EDC had different reasons why they were started. They've accomplished some things, some things they haven't. But I just want to get back to that, what, what value and benefits do you see just in committees in general? Like, I want to know what you guys value, because I know what this says. I know that, yes, committees, and I know what I've experienced, because committees can have a really positive impact. But it can also be very destructive. They can be destructive to staff, they can be destructive just to the community members because if they become disenchanted and they don't want to participate in the government anymore. It's like, well, geez, nothing ever happens, I don't really have a voice, they wasted my time. I could, like, say with the staff, it can waste the staff's time, it can waste the council's time. So if they're not well organized, they can be more destructive than good. But there are a lot of really positive things if they are well structured, they have a well, good purpose and they're created the right way. So I, I'm in no way suggesting anything about our committees. I want to know what you guys specifically value and what you want to see.
I think three of them want to speak, so we'll let.
Yes, let's.
Sir Holmes first, then.
Yeah, so before we move on to that, I just, I want to make a, a comment about kind of how we have tried to apply structure. Every year, the committees come before council and they have their goals and they have a summary of what they've accomplished. And I think typically, they've come mid-year and provided an update to council. And this has been for years, right? So they do have council-approved direction and it's not just a singular thing. It wasn't just the Parks Master Plan, right, for the Parks Committee this year. There are a range of things for them to work on. So it's not that we're entirely lacking structure or focus or direction for them, but there is a disconnect in, I guess, ensuring that that is maintained or there's like accountability to sticking to that or accountability to continue to direct them to that. So I think that's what I would like to explore, like where is that disconnect occurring? Because I do think we have a good plan for structure reporting and engagement. So what I want to get out of the committees, much of the things that the mayor said. You know, I think it is, the more people that we can get engaged with the local government in this community, I think the better off we, the better off the city is having relations with the community across all the departments. And we're a community that's faced with, we're going to have a lot of change in the future, right? And so I think continuing to have avenues for the community to be engaged is a benefit overall. I think, I mean, all of it, well, four of us came up through committees or commissions, right? It's also a great training ground for counselors themselves. So I think there's an overall benefit to the city to kind of have that level of access to people who'd like to volunteer. And there's obviously just the benefit of, you know, if you have an energetic community willing to give, why not take advantage of that? So yeah, I see a lot of positives. I completely understand though, with, out the proper management, you can have, you know, people lose momentum, people get frustrated. And we've seen all that too, so.
Absolutely.
Counselor President Miller. So focusing on the question, how do we want to use them where we see their value? I, for me, I think it needs to be them out in the community, basically bringing us back more information from what our constituents want to see in these various parks. I do think that we need to focus on timing and our structure so that the committees give their updates before we set our, our goal setting, basically. So that they basically, I don't know, maybe they need to give a presentation or ideas to us ahead of goal setting so that we can implement or discuss those, at least discuss those different ideas during goal setting. And I, I think at that point officially, if we are to keep committees, that would be the time that we adopt those official plans as a council so that staff also has direction on, you know, what, what they think they need to do. That's, yeah, I mean, but just, I mean, first and foremost though, I think their main duty needs to be basically, you know, really finding out not what they want, but what the community wants. So they can be, you know, they have a multiplier, right? So they know people in the community, so they should be collecting, my opinion, they should be collecting that information about what our community wants and bringing that consensus back to city council. And I, I also think that whoever the liaisons are to these groups, we need to find, we need defined duties for what those liaisons are doing. The performance of their committees, they need to be responsible. Whoever the counselors assign those committees, they need to take responsibility for the performance and the governance of their committee. But that first needs to start with us setting up, you know, what the SOP is, what the rules are and start from there. And then every year, I think that whoever the liaison is, you know, if there's some deviation from those SOPs, then that needs to come to council, we need to approve that within the first two months of the year. But yeah, there needs to be very defined structure here, in my opinion.
Counselor LaFrance.
Thank you. So I was the liaison to the EDC for a while before Jeanette. And then like Kim said, a lot of us came from the Parks and Rec. And one thing I think it's important to, to mention is the difference in, in kind of how each of them are run, like meeting to meeting. So the EDC, for example, meets during the day, which means NJ essentially, when I was there, like he would run, help run the meeting and there is an accountability there. He would keep them kind of on task and rein them in a little bit. And he would make it clear what, what they were trying, what the goal of each session was so that he could bring stuff back to, to council based on the goals. And I think the EDC was doing a great job, like giving recommendations on the small program and things like that. I don't know, I haven't been involved in Parks and Rec in a while, but 6:00 PM meeting, you know, Dave tries to go when he can, right? But, and he does a great job when he does, but I just don't see the, the staff. And, and I know we need to find a balance of committing staff time to these committees, but it, I, I think that is a pretty big difference, like I, I, I see between the two committees. Is that fair? Mr. Redd?
Hey, David.
Does he go to all of them?
Okay.
Yeah, it does take time out of their regular, because you have to come back to work and then we go off at four. If their committees are six, that would consideration.
One thing I got to is, is to me, the liaison kind of changed. At the beginning, you asked, what was the role liaison? At first, I thought it was they come to the meeting, they act, participate. If the committee has some questions, they can ask the liaison, liaison can kind of state what they think the council is looking for. If there is a question that needs to go back to council, it could go through liaison and vice versa. If the committee, we wanted to ask the committee something, we'd go to the liaison. I think, you know, we could look at, you've talked about changing that to where they're either the chair or the vice chair. They have more of a leadership role in that and they do kind of organize, run the committee based on, you know, what we want to have them do. Instead of just being kind of report back, they're actually more in charge of the committee. That way, they can stay on task and pace what we have led them. But that's kind of goes back to the goals too, is that we maybe need to run it more like part of our goal setting in October. So they work on their goals or what they want to ask the council to do coming up. You know, what do they want to maybe do? And so by November, they propose to us their goals and then we talk about it and we set it up and approve. Yes, so this next year, you're going to work on this. This is our goals, we've approved it and we know how much staff time and kind of how it will play throughout the year. It is tough when our goals, we set these goals, they're supposed to last almost the whole year. If something comes up in the middle, we've got to know, wait till the end of the year. We'll put that on our next year's goals. I mean, they kind of need to do the same potentially if it's going to require staff time because staff is already set going this direction. So that we set those goals at the beginning of the year and so they know going in the year, these are the few things that we want them to work on throughout the year. It's kind of, it was one thought, throw out a dartboard, that's one thought, I think, of how we can run these committees.
Also, I just wanted to, and I'm not sure if you participated in this session. It was really interesting how some of the cities are creating what they call RDMOs, which is Regional Destination Management Organizations. Or they're, you know, working with DMOs. And, and so what they're doing is as a, going to get, getting together with other cities. For example, I'm just going to throw us Capus with, with St. Helens, with Columbia City and other smaller cities that are coming together as, to support economic development, not just for the cities, but the region. And I'm just think, you know, throwing that out there as far as when we're coming up with these ideas, how they're going to be structured. For example, I would love, for example, the EDC to like, like, there and, and I think Counselor Miller said, is more be out there and, and talking to, for example, talking to businesses, serving, serving the business, see what they want, what they would like or would like the city to do. Though, I mean, there's so many ideas that we can think of, that we can do and structure. I think that the idea that we have in the conversation is great. But we can start somewhere, as long as we, we, we establish the rules. And, and conduct, I think was an issue before with some of these committees. So I think we addressed some of the conduct. And then now we need to follow the rules and, and just like, I believe Afgha who said, not necessarily find out what the committee would want to do, what they want to do, but more of the interest of what the, of our community wants to do. So, and there's just so many ideas that we can use from other cities that are already doing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It's kind of along those lines. I think we all agree that the primary focus should, like agenda-wise, be focused on the goals of council. But I do think a secondary function of these is to be visionary. I think there's some really good ideas that come from these, these committees. And I don't know what it would look like, maybe 80% of each meeting is focused on primary objective of meeting and, and helping with our council-derived goals. But 20% of the time is like brainstorming things that, you know, within the purview of that committee, I do think some, some pretty good ideas come.
So will you be able to take kind of your, we're kind of throwing a bunch at you and you'll be able to look at it later? Write it down, talk to us, ask us questions over there?
Still.
Come back with what you think you heard.
Well, I, I, I'm going to do a little bit of that now and move on to the next point of that. So what I, what I did here, the, the biggest point that you guys or the value that you see in committees or what you'd like to see is providing the legwork in the community, getting additional questions to help generate ideas, have community engagement, to help promote change, provide a training ground to the council, to help set goals, connect with the vision and make sure they are connected with the vision and goals. And yeah, to be out in the community a little bit more to, to generate, you know, getting some revenue or other donations or anything like that. So, and, and yeah, I think those, anything to add to that? Or is that in general kind of the value or what you would like to see in any committee, just in general?
One thing that we did come up last year, when you talk about goals, they have their own goals that they might want to work out throughout the year. Also, their goals that they want to see council work on, like maybe goals that they think we should focus on based on what they're hearing. And then that's just a recommendation.
I feel, I feel like everything needs to funnel back to one point and that is to city council setting the goals. Because again, we get into the situation where everything requires staff time, right? And if we can't in one lane, you know, wreck staff and figure out what our plans are, it's going to continue to be us.
Like, I'm just thinking of a specific then, if they think we really need to work on ADA upgrades throughout our, you know, they've talked about it, they've heard it, they're giving a goal to the council this next year. You guys think about putting this into your goals, updating all of our park structures to ADA compliant. And then we look at it and we decide throughout, you know, hey, yep, that's something we want to focus on or it's not. On the goal for them to work on, unless we turn it back to them and say, okay, we agree. We're going to ask you to go out and get quotes and bids and what, where, where could those be done? What, what parks need them the most? Prioritize the parks that need them the most.
Mr. Mayor. So I'm in agreement with Counselor Miller. We're the ones that set the goals and the priorities for the city. And then the committees serve for council. So kind of how Florence has set it up, like I like how they describe it. Setting the goals and then, and then committees meet. They create a workback plan to achieve those goals. So they are working within the construct. Their role should not be to. Their role should not be to be creating goals, because then it becomes, then we wind up where we were. I think we should be working on this is what you should be working, but I really want to work on this. That's not what we said. So we're setting the direction. That's where I would change with respect to where I deviate your read back, is that we're setting the goals, they create a workback plan that's within the framework. Um, then they pitch that workback plan back to us and we say yes, no, on on target, and then they go and do, then report back.
The only question on that is where do we develop our goals? Listen to the community, we listen to people, what do they think that we need to do? It's them giving us some recommendations. We don't have to obviously say that's not a goal we want to work on, but we're not out there. I agree with that, I think that's how it needs to go, but when we work on our goals, where do we come up with all of our information that we think we need to work on?
Well, there there is different options, though. It's not just saying that, we're getting pivoted in the com, in the coun, the committees here, but you also are working with the staff all year round about all the projects. And we work with the community and you work with the community, are bringing all these things together and working with the committees, too, that we have. Where, hey, this came around, this came around, this is what we want to do, and it's all part of that goal setting session of, I mean, we already have a parks master plan. We have all these master plans that have already kind of given a lot of direction. Doesn't mean we can't deviate with the really cool things that have come up that we didn't even consider. Sure, those can be brought up, anybody can bring up an idea, I don't think that's wrong to bring them up, say, hey, let's talk about that. But it does become difficult if they start making too many different ideas. Um, not, not that they shouldn't have, like, that's, that's why I'm with you, they could, but is that why they were created? And that's why I come back to the, what do we, it's good to know why we want committees, that's why I want to ask those, and I agree. Having the vision, it all needs to stand around what our goals and visions are as the council, because that's where these came from, and they're, they're there to serve you. Um, but then what other options are there? You know, looking outside, we don't want to duplicate work, because that, that's what I'm, I worry about. If we have a committee that we already have staff already doing all the work, what was the point of the committee? Um, doing a parks master plan, a great example, so we talked about different type of committees. You have your permanent ones that have a specific work plan, you have these ad hoc community committees that are set, set up just for a specific thing. There are also staff committees where we can go get some information. Hey, we need some more information from the community, let's get some specialists. Like, if you're talking about a disc golf, do you have to have a parks committee for that? Or can I go get a bunch of people to play disc golf? That's what I did before, and I got my own ad hoc committee that wasn't subject to public, public meeting laws, I could do it a lot quicker. And I was focused on specialists around disc golf. And then we gave it back to the council, saying, hey, this is what we came up, you know, they still approved it, we always brought it back to the council. But there are other ways to accomplish some of those things and to get that feedback, there's surveys, there's other ways to get feedback from the community as well. Um, so I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying there are, there are other things to consider with, with that.
Just heard a couple of things, just to clarify. I heard saying we already developed work plans for our master plans for works, parks and recs and so forth. You don't need a committee to tell us what we need to do next. I mean, that, I'm just.
In some areas, if there's already that plan, yeah.
But I'm here, and then what we're saying here seems like, well, we want to get feedback for the community, what do they think, what do businesses need in order to support their businesses? And then something that's not in a master plan right now. Is that where we're seeking the committees to go out and seek that information, bring that back? See how we can, as the council, as a city, support those initiatives? Those are two.
Great, great question.
Those are two different things, something that we've had consultants work on and and paid, had some money to get it, and so we can have a plan to do. Or are we just getting uh, feedback from the community and then have this, these committees to do the work instead of that?
Every, every single one of these examples on page seven for the advisory and volunteer committees of France, except I think one, does. Implement the provisions of city council goals for the description of every single one of these except one or two. So I think that the first focus needs to, it directly answer, if you.
Right.
Or to reply to your question basically is, I think that that's what the main focus is, is to get us to. I I vision this like a multi-lane highway and they start out, you know, with their multi-lane highway, how do we get down to one lane that's productive? That we have one channel of communication, lack of a better word, so that we can relay that and come up with a good plan. It's something that's, that's not chaos, but organized chaos, or so you say.
Using them for the purpose that they're created for, you know, and that, that really is, we have one goal, we have one vision. What is, what is the avenue the council wants to use for that? Is it through the staff? Is it through surveys? Is it through having an ad hoc committee? Is there a permanent committee? Um, is it through a staff advisory committee? I mean, there are lots of different lanes we can get this information to help with our work plans, get more information. Because as we're developing, you know, there's, we have the parks master plan, but maybe, hey, we're looking at Grabhorn, want to get a site development. Let's put together somebody who has a vested interest to help maybe in that community or people who are specialists around that, just to develop that when that time comes. Does that mean they have to meet every single month? Maybe not, maybe just until we have to have that project done. I don't, that, that would be like the more of the format of the ad hoc committee, is when we get projects that we want additional scope, that the council doesn't have time to set every council meeting to do. Then we get those people that have volunteered, want to be part of parks, we have that list and we go out, hey, let's meet, let's do this. Um, or more of the permanent committee is, we have a specific direction, like, EDC is a great example of that, where we have the urban renewal, we're going to have grants coming in. We have, it's a continual development, this is a long-term plan, we want to get a downtown, you know, develop a vibrant, vibrant, diverse local economy, goal number one. We want to continually to work on this, because we don't have a downtown, we don't, we're working to involve our community. We want to bring in these business specialists to help, because, yes, we have a business owner here, let's get a lot more business owners here and let's get them in the room to discuss this and keep working towards that continually. I mean, and that is mentioned here about making sure the right people are on the committees to make it impactful and depending on the type of committee you have. Um, and are they in in city, are they outside of the city, are they specialists or the business owners? I mean, that's all things that you can decide. But once again, it's all to determine, accomplish a goal that we currently have. It's like, we have a goal, also the goal, how are we going to accomplish this? Staff's overwhelmed and we need a little extra help or need some specialist help or whatever, be a different way to think about getting those lanes.
Again, going back to your original question, too, it's, you know, we have the master plans for each of these, too. So once we have the master plan and the master plan's adopted, what, you know, go, just generally looking at what the purpose of these committees are, too. It's like the committees, in my mind, in a perfect role to be, the committees are um, basically helping with the master plan. But once we adopt the master plan, then everything else becomes kind of noise and a distraction, in my opinion. Now, that's not to say that we can't have periodic reviews or some structure there of those master plans, but continuing to, to adopt a plan. I'm thinking with my business hat on here, to adopt a plan and then have team people go reevaluate everything that you're doing related to that plan on a constant basis is going to be problematic. There needs to be a very organized reasoning for having committees and it needs to be reviewing those. But it all needs to go back to what that master plan is and what the goal is, what is the objective? Of being, of continuously reviewing what was already approved, basically, in a master plan.
Well, and I think what might be interesting is to, I mean, they've got one, two, three, four, five standing advisory committees and they're a city of our size. I mean, that's incredible, right? The fact that they can manage that many committees, have that much participation um, on those groups and that they're productive. So, I mean, I think there is a real opportunity for us here, but what would be interesting is to see, um, just again, referring to page seven, what are their goals? How, how have they laid out their goals? And then how do these um, standing committees, you know, functionally support all of those goals? Uh, that would be helpful for me to kind of see how the process of, you know, um, setting the direction for the committee and marrying that with um, city goals.
Right, a, a lot of it comes down to, it talks about like going back to the different types of committees. Yeah, it, so we talked about transportation committee, Florence struggles on the coast, as a lot of coastal communities do with their transportation network. Kind of a big deal to figure out how to get that many people through their summer. And it's not like bog down everything, and I know that transportation's a big thing everywhere, but specifically on the coast, it's kind of a really big issue, especially for small cities. So the council probably say, hey, this is one of our main goals, about getting our network to run smoothly and not to have a million traffic jams everywhere, want to be safe, want it to to flow. Let's keep a focus on that, so they go back and look at intersection, they look at these things, they bring these suggestions back with people probably made up of ODOT and other engineers to talk about that, just to get some additional feedback. Uh, public arts committee that, you know, just looking through those, it's usually a focus out there that the staff can't accomplish by themselves. Probably not a bunch of arts people on their, on their staff, so let's bring in some specialists around art and know how to do all those things and let's get feedback and and do those. And then, and you can go through all those budget committees by law. Uh, economic development committee is obviously a, one I think is difficult in a lot of communities. Environmental management advisory, that, I don't know where they even do with that one. But yeah, it it just really comes down to, why do we have them and why do we have that committee? Is it, it really, is it really a longstanding committee or do we need smaller committees? Is it a staff, is it a council committee? Um, because the, what I worry about, we have these, I've lost my paper. Those skulls are what you, the, the council really wants to get out of these, and one of those was about a training ground, about engaging the community. If we don't manage our committees right, it kind of becomes the opposite, you're going to lose that. And I, I don't want to just put it all on, say, well, you know, I can do this as a manager and I can really manage these and we can make sure we have good quality committees and we're having our meetings, good accountability, good structure. But if there's a lack of substance, you can't make an agenda out of nowhere, they start coming up with stuff out of nowhere. And and that would be a concern, and that's why maybe having a longstanding committee, if there's not enough to go on that, could be destructive. I'm not saying it is, but it could be as a, as a concern, whereas the EDC, um, likewise can have that same, if we're not having that direction, it can become destructive. Though they've had their, their goal to get their strategic plan, it's been all year, we're at the end of the year. Like, you know, was that a management thing, was that an engagement thing for the committee? I don't know, I wasn't here, but you know, those are good questions to ask, and is that causing people to not be as engaged anymore?
That was something they decided they wanted to do versus something the council told them that they should do.
Right.
Um, and so I was thinking, yeah, where did that come from and and would we have ever have tasked them with doing that?
So it's, I'm sorry, I, I, just to answer a question, it was um, in the, they founded in the charter uh, as a committee. And they felt that that probably might guide them to feeling that they, the reason why they're, they're there. Uh, because even when I was in the committee back, back then, years ago, there was still no direction. So I think that's what they decided to say, you know, we need our direction, so we're just going to give ourselves the direction.
And they could go to the liaison and say, here's what we'd like to work on and talk to you off record and, and then you could say, yeah, that, I'll take it to council and see if we want to give you that direction. And, you know, what are your deliverables, how much time is that, you know, what's it going to take and give them a direction.
Right, I, I mean, we have our goal number one, develop a vibrant, a vibrant and diverse local economy. So I'm, obviously, there's a direction of the economy. Okay, what does that mean? Does that mean you have to have the work plan made for them? No, we, we said that off, say, hey, we have a really big interest in economic development, we'd like our downtown improved. Like your help figuring out how to do that, then they'd come back and say, hey, we need to do the strategic plan, we need to do these things. Um, but it's always the caveat or the risk of, oh, that stuff still takes staff time and is that the direction of the economy that we're wanting to go for? Other things that we're doing with our um, vibrant, diverse local economy, we're obviously working with the CET and other places, there's a lot of different avenues to go about that. Um, those are good questions to ask, I don't have the answer, those are just things to ask, because it's really council, uh, the vision and goal. And so is there the purpose of that committee or is there not? Is there, we do have community livability, we have a park system, a lot of stuff about parks. Okay, is the park committee appropriate to access those? What are the goals specifically in there? Or would ad hoc parks committees work better? I don't know, those are good questions to ask. Um, and that's why, how then, or do we have the right committees, do we have the right structure? Because there's a different way of structuring an ad hoc committee compared to a permanent committee. The way that we do our SOP around those, some, kind of similar, but your work plan's going to be different, because one ends. This is a focus compared to, yeah, you do that and then figure out what you're going to do and just come back regularly, you know that? And and that's where you can get a disconnect with engagement, because once you're done, what do we do? And then it starts to dissolve, well, let's create something, let's, let's come up with something. And some can be successful, I guess it depends on how it's managed, but does it meet our goals or is it distracting and taking more staff time?
Councilor Miller. So I'm thinking, you know, as we're having this conversation and just kind of throwing ideas out there, would it, would it be, is it a good idea maybe for each one of these groups to have a master plan? They adopt their master plan before our goal setting basically every year. Then basically their meetings throughout the, you know, the preceding year is revisiting to see if those ideas and concept, whatever they want to do are still valid. Because things change, I mean, we, you know, things that we thought were reality or a good idea a year ago, we probably, we may have a different opinion on now. But there really needs to be a goalpost here on, for these committees, because I think that's one of the issues, is they don't really have clear directive. They, they need to have deliverables, they need to see the light at the end of the tunnel type of thing and what they're working towards. I think that is part of the disorganization that we've seen, so I don't know how, again, I'm just throwing out ideas.
I, I agree, but having them do their own work plan, if it's not aligned with what you guys are wanting, coming back to that, focusing it back up or funneling it back up to you guys and create a lot of work that never. So coming up with a lot of ideas, sometimes they're, they fail out those, because there is no staff time to make it happen, it does not align with their goals. And the staff and council is always going to go back to our goals and then they're going to get ignored as a committee, because a lot of times committees can't accomplish the things themselves, you know. They can, you can get some really um, engaged people that maybe, but in general committees, they're volunteer. And it's like, well, give me something and help me out, or it's just going to fizz, we don't have the resources that we need, especially when staff can already provide a lot of it. I mean, we have those master plans, we have a lot of things aligned, and if they're starting to do something they already have, that's a waste of their time. They come back like, here's what we came, like, oh, we already have a plan.
I still go back to the parks master plan, though, like, that's a prime example of, we have a, a really good plan that people spend a lot of time and money on. And then we have all of this side conversation going on that really is really distracting, disruptive to the plan that's already been the master plan. It's called the master plan for a reason. So how do, how do we address that?
So, so in your opinion, just by what we've talked about, that is the question, how do we address that? Is, does it continue to be a committee that meets once a month? Is it a committee that meets, that's formed but only meets as needed? Or do we change it to an ad hoc committee, uh, as we have projects come up, then we reach out and have them come back?
I have a thought on that, but Councilor Santiago first.
So, yeah, I have a thought in that as well, and so I think we're mainly talking about the Parks and Recs and the EDC, because.
Maybe, because the other question is, do we have, you talked about these other committees, are there other committees we need? That would be the question, and are there committees that we don't need?
Right, because the committee pretty much is, you know, they get together for the, they review the budget and the uh, the planning commission reviews, you know, the plans and so and approves them, right? So um, they're pretty clear what they need to do.
Right, our current structure, those are the two committees we have, the parks and the EDC that.
I, I like the idea, and I think the committees, from what my observation, personal observation, is that I think, I think they would be more constructive, they would work better as an ad hoc uh, committee. Because I've heard a little pushback on that they have to abide by the same rules that council about talking to each other outside of, you know, sometimes they want to get together and have a conversation. And we're like, nope, you got to be careful and not to have these email interactions or conversations. So maybe they will like the idea of being more ad hoc structure versus.
Like a staff ad hoc, to report to the staff at that point. If, if you report to the council, you're always subject to public meeting.
I see, yeah, so it'd be.
As a staff, which is honestly, that is a great, is a possibility with, so, depending on the ca, council, I have a lot of ideas for the EDC or the parks, like, I, I can go over them. But for example, with the EDC, there's a future that that could roll over into what's called the Main Street Program, where we can qualify for Main Street Oregon Grants. You have to have an organization set up, there are already vested business owners and operators in this area, so we already have a great base, which is something I think that could really be helpful in the future with us through that committee. Um, same thing with.
Committee or is it ad hoc staff?
So the, the Main Street Oregon eventually would be separate from the city, it's its own individual organization. If you're working with them to help, we have to create it somewhere, and it's, the biggest issue with Main Street Oregon is if the city's leading it, it's really hard to set up a sustainable thing. You have to have business engagement that want to lead that.
What I've heard, the city's been aga, not against, but not into the Main Street Program. And so, but we're, I'm not, that's none of us, so maybe it is time we look at that and see where that could benefit us.
And a lot of the conversation we had at the EDC is around our downtown, where do we have a downtown? How are we going to do a vibrant downtown, which is great, and if that's what the council is wanting in that strategic, hey, let's keep working on that, let's keep creating this plan and move forward. It could be a council, we could move it over to a staff committee, um, then it wouldn't be subject to the public meeting laws, they would be already reporting to a staff and giving feedback. Um, that's the difference between those, one is advice to the council, one's advice to a staff, council has to do public meeting laws.
Um. I would, um, one, two, is, is if they, we're a standing committee, it's like our planning commission, they have a date in the calendar every month set if they have a meeting or something to do. But if they don't, it gets canceled well enough in advance. And so you don't, they don't feel like I have to meet every month just to meet, but they're ho, placeholders in case they do have something. And so you don't, they don't feel like I have to meet every month just to meet, but they're ho- placeholders in case they do have something, but. With the idea of maybe, you know, you do meet at least once or twice a year, because you've got to get your update to us, what have you done through this year? If they stay as standing committees, um, but are you able to maybe look at Florence, kind of take that? Kind of come up with one that you feel that you're hearing from us and maybe through fur- future calls, call us, email us, ask us what we think. Prevent it, provide us one and say, and then we can look at it and tweak it a little bit and then go with it.
Well, it it all comes down to your, because I can come with lots of recommendations and I can go a lot of different routes with this. It really comes down to, that's why I brought it back to the councils, what do you want, does this provide a value to you as a council? Do you want advice from these committees, any other committees? Are you having, I mean, we look at our goals short, do we need a committee for those, do we not need a committee, what type of committee? Those all go towards as a staff, as a council, I'm asking those questions because that really determines what we do going next. And these are all great reasons why we have them, but the way that we have it set up, is that the right way to get and accomplish these goals? And and that is um question. You know, for the council to really determine, because in the end. You guys are the ones who are going to have to determine if we go to ad hoc, if we switch it to staff, if we. Um, keep it as a standing committee, it is your structure for how you want that help. And and that's why I'm bringing it back, because really that is your decision in the end.
Can we, I mean, it's easy, we're all here together, but we're running out of time, is there, can we email you our thoughts of why, what we think, what we want, each of us. And you can look at those and say, I've got five of them pretty much saying the exact same thing.
When you say it's going to be, if it's an ad hoc and it goes, they report to staff, right? Is that taking more staff time than it currently, that, does that model take more of their time?
Well, it's typically an ad hoc staff thing would be something the staff sees the value in, saying, I want this additional feedback. They're trying to do that so we can come back with a recommendation for you, we want the specialists to give us stuff and they they direct and they coordinate those meetings. Um, kind of, you see that with like technical advisory committees, you did that with, uh, you bring the the parks master plan as a technical advisory committee, so you're going back, you're having these meetings. Get input so that you can go back and write stuff up about it, make a better presentation for the council. The ad hoc for a council would be more of subject to public meeting laws, but they're only, they have a start and an end. So they're they're, for example, doing the parks master plan or an update to that plan, they're going to do it here and in a year they're going to end. Goal is to have this revamped or updated, once it's done, the committee is dissolved. Um, compared to a parks committee, the standing would be, yeah, we could do the parks master plan. But then we also have a lot of other stuff we want to do and we have that work plan because we think, hey, we can get, I've heard getting some. Um, fundraising or some other things, uh, fulfilling that parks master plan, that gets a little hazy because. Those are one offs here and there, is that really enough to go for the full year, so then the question is, we just say, hey, let's keep it, they're only going to meet once or twice this year when we need them. So it's going to become an as needed committee, but they're still structured under the same bylaws, so.
So I've heard, and I, when I was at liaison, as a liaison with the Parks and Recs, they were also talking about. Possibly seeking out grants and and then there was a conversation, well, we don't want them to be grants, but so. Where, in what model would they, for example, because I I've heard both committees that they're interested in seeking funding, additional funding for projects. For the city, are any of those models, do they say, well, in this model, they won't be able to do that?
It'd just be up to the council goals um and and the direction you have, but. The the thing that typical with the committee, they would be going after small grants, big grants usually require a lot of time and. And which does usually require staff, because the amount of environmental studies you have to provide and infrastructure studies and whatever study. These big plans usually require a lot of information on them, not something a committee is usually going to come up by themselves, you're either going to have a grant writer or a lot of staff time doing it. Um, but if you're going after something like the Ford Family Foundation or something where it's like five to 10,000, yeah, they could do that, they're they're simple grants, you don't have to have a lot for them. You just have to have a basic project and and the staff could provide a little of that information, it's not as much involved. So, but is that really the time that we're looking for, is that what we're wanting for them? Um, where there is a value and Kim had mentioned it before is, these people are in the community and they could go out and really, if we're looking just for donations. In the parks master plan, there was feedback saying, hey, the community is willing to finance and help with parks. Well, let's help get that word out there and get some donations in there to make some of these parks projects happen. Um, so that that is a.
Program that I thought if we worked with staff and he gave us a list of these 20 things that we want to. Picnic table here, these are here, you can get with the, you know, develop a program, how much each one of those costs, if you want to. Um, secure a picnic table, we'll put your name on it, go out and that group can go out and find people that are willing to pay for those. And you can use that, but that again, that's that's our goal set with staff, you know, we get with staff and determine that is something they think we can do. And then we task Parks and Rec or whoever with that.
I think that's an EDC and park.
It could be.
They can both be working on something like that together.
Yeah, so just to to sum up, since we, I'm glad, I mean, this is a really good discussion and I wasn't quite sure how long each one would take. Um, I I do think it's really good for the council to think this over and and think about our current committees. Are they structured the way we want as far as ad hoc, council, staff, you know, committees, do they have the direction necessarily stays a permanent committee? If we should, is it a regular committee or is it just as needed committee? Um, think about what we have, but also what we don't have, are there other things for our goal, I don't just want to go out there and say, hey, there's a lot of different committees we can do. That doesn't align with our goals, um, but if there is something that says, hey, this is going to help us achieve what we need to achieve. We don't have that, we should probably look into and then decide what type of committee that would be. Um, but yeah, for sure, the ones we have, do we keep them the way they are, should we alter them at all, are we getting the value? Are we risking, are we risking losing engagement because we can't keep them sustainable because there's not enough work for them to do?
We want to know something before goal setting though, correct? Because that's when we would set their goals if if there was a committee.
Right, and and if if we don't get there, I mean, yes, yes and no, I mean, if we don't get there, they're they're, it can meet, they're going to probably meet in the next month or two and come up with their work plan. That's going to come as suggestions for you guys to consider and then that might help just, you know, to figure out what we are coming up with next year. Hey, we really have this parks and that's a great opportunity, let's, now we have a lot more for the parks committee or not, you know, that, so it might. Something that could wait or we could try to get it beforehand, I mean, though, the questions, um, think about those, send, send some. Send me, yeah, I like that, send me your opinion of each committee, what we have, just give me some information, I'll put it together and we can talk about it at the next council meeting.
Each of us send it to you.
Right, and I'll just kind of put it together, information and we can discuss what we got, or you can think about it and we could just come back and verbally talk about it.
If you can answer these questions or to a degree what you think and and if he can get enough consensus, then he can put the plan together, I'm hearing this from most of you. Here's a few things that half of you said this and half of you said that.
A little bit more, right, right. Uh, do we want to try to shoot for the next council or you want to give it a month? Well, that's what I'm asking you, yeah, I'm I'm good.
If you get enough in a week, I don't know what, I forget what we have scheduled for a work session next month, but next time, but if I know.
If we don't have another session, we can do another one, this, if we have another one, I'll move it to the council meeting after that.
The better for us, the EDC is.
We have urban renewal coming up, I think.
And then, and then I would hate for them to work on this plan, especially uh, all and then we go totally different direction, that would be unfair.
Right, that that's a good, that's a fair assessment.
Finish that one, I'm sure.
Right, I I don't see that, I mean, I think it's a value, it does have that in there and I see the vision of that personally, but maybe not, that's, that is a fair comment.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, you got 40 seconds.